It's a few minutes after seven. I'd like to get started if we can. I'm Roger Fraser. I'm the village administrator. And we, as you know, have put -- the council has put a question on the ballot regarding the Headley override. And I want to spend a few minutes this evening talking about the whys and wherefore's of a Headley override. What is it? Why is it? And what does it do for the village? We have about 20 slides that I'd like to walk through. As we go through those slides, if you have a question about the content of a slide, please feel free to raise your hand and ask a question. My intent and my hope is that we can work our way through that slide presentation and then take advantage after the slide presentation to have a general conversation. There's a number of council members here who are interested in dealing with your questions. I will try to answer questions to the extent they apply to our data and the way that we do the day-to-day financial stuff. But for the most part, come on in. This is Karen. There's some other chairs up here if you'd like. Bill, there's a chair up here that's available. You okay? All right. I'll pass it on. So Tuesday, November 8th is election day, and there's a ballot question that asks the village voters to consider overriding the language of the Headley amendment and to allow the village property tax rate to roll back to the voter-authorized 3.5 mils that's contained in the village charter. Go ahead. So what is Headley? What is the Headley amendment? In 1978, a Michigan constitutional amendment that requires local property tax rates to be annually adjusted rolled back so that they increase no more than the state -- I'm sorry, the rate of inflation. Let me expand on that just a little bit. In 1978, prior to that, the property tax rates were changing as the value of property increased, and it still does for the most part. But the fact is that there was no cap on that rate. So during the '70s, property tax values escalated pretty dramatically. And as those property tax values increased, so too did the taxable value of the properties. In fact, there wasn't a whole lot of cap on that either. And property owners, in some cases, were being driven out of their homes because the tax rate increased so rapidly as compared to the value of the property and what they had in their pockets to pay for those taxes. It was as a consequence of that series of problematic increases in property values and taxes that the Headley amendment was adopted in 1978. And that Headley amendment requires that for each of the local jurisdictions, there is a rollback of their local tax rate based on the increase in property values versus the tax rate, and it's reduced to ensure that the tax rate does not increase any faster than the rate of inflation in any given year. That's the background. So then, what's the problem with that? Go ahead, please. Headley reduces the village's annual revenue growth. It doesn't reduce our taxes, but it does reduce the amount that we can experience growth in the revenue, inhibiting how the village meets the normal increased cost of doing the public's business. Folks, come on in. During the last two fiscal years, the village council balanced the adopted spending plans by using money from savings since there was not additional money in our revenues in each year to manage the increases that we were experiencing in the last several years. Sir, you're welcome to have a seat there, or you're welcome to come back here. We have more seats back here. Go ahead, please. Annually, the state provides an adjustment factor -- that's what I was talking about just a moment ago -- that reduces the local property tax rates to conform with a measured rate of inflation for consumer goods. And this is done each year before the tax bills go out. The effect of the Headley reduction factor on the village of Franklin has been to reduce our annual property tax rate from the charter-authorized rate of 3.5 mils, that means $3.50 for each $1,000 of taxable value, to the current Headley-adjusted rate of 2.569 -- I'm sorry, 2.5639 mils, which is $2.56 for each $1,000 of taxable value. Please? So we took a look at the last decade and examined what, in fact, was the rate of taxes, the tax rate that was used in each of those fiscal years to establish the taxes collected. You can see on the far left that 2013, we were at 3.12, and over on the far right, or 2022, we're at 2.5639. At no time did we go up, back up to three and a half. It continues to go down each year slightly. The one anomaly here that I had to look up was 2017, where the amount collected was two mils. And that was actually a decision of the village council in 2017. And they chose not to collect as much as they had or could have for whatever reasons were due at the time. But we have the signed statements of the president and the clerk on the submitter that went to the county that indicated that what we collected that year was strictly just the two mils. Go ahead, please. Question? Yeah. Sure. No. The -- in 2000, I looked this up, and on the chart -- okay, sorry. The question was, if it was 2.0 in 2017, why did it go to 2.998 in 2018? Is that not the question? There was not a Headley override. In this particular case, the reduction -- I'm sorry. The rate that could have been authorized using the Headley amounts for 2017 was 3.04. And the council, for whatever reason, chose to collect less than that. That was a local decision to not collect all that they could have in 2017. Okay? Al had his hand up, and I'll recognize him first. I'll be glad to take your question in just a moment.
There's some [inaudible]. That doesn't show [inaudible]. And how they -- when you're showing [inaudible].
That's correct.
And so, so the heavy [inaudible]. They call it [inaudible]. The property tax [inaudible]. That's [inaudible]. And that's a constant all the way through here, is that the --
And what we're doing in this particular case is only trying to show the rate that we can collect and how that changes from year to year, and it's working against what you described as the overall taxable value of the village.
Which [inaudible]. People [inaudible].
You multiply -- each year, it's slightly different, and it increases some. That's right. And what this intended to do is to ensure that the amount that the village collects each year in terms of increased revenue is no greater than the rate of inflation. Sir, you had a question?
It was more just a clarification that you are allowed to [inaudible].
That's correct. That's a decision of the council. Sir?
[inaudible]. [inaudible]. [inaudible].
I'll have some information about that later on in this slide, or these series of slides. Yes, the actual dollar amounts collected.
[inaudible]. So the [inaudible]. You actually [inaudible]. You actually [inaudible].
In 2017?
No. [inaudible].
Two slides from this one?
[inaudible]. Yes.
In that particular case, in the last two fiscal years, what the council did to balance the budget so that it was appropriate for state's purposes was to use some money from savings to be used for operations in that particular year.
I think the question is, was the budget also [inaudible]?
That's -- that was the -- the plan when the budget was adopted.
And not the actual -- well, the actual budget [inaudible]. The projected budget for the year, do you expect to spend [inaudible]?
You've lost me.
Well, you made the budget, right?
Yes.
You budget what you expect to have [inaudible]. Right? You don't bet on having growing something. No, I said you expect to have a certain amount of budget, and you have actual spending. And if you don't have enough, your actual [inaudible]. Actual spending compared to what you're doing with the budget was, that money has to come from somewhere, and it came from savings. So we [inaudible]. Okay. So we knew when the budget was created, there was a [inaudible]. And those [inaudible].
Not in each year, no.
Because if the budget [inaudible]. That caused more [inaudible].
Not necessarily, because in some cases, we wound up spending less, so we weren't dependent on as much from savings as we would have, as we planned as the worst-case scenario. Go ahead, please. So what is the vote all about? The village charter has provided for a number of years that the maximum of 3.5 mils could be levied within the village. For a number of reasons, mostly the Headley changes, we have been collecting less than that, and currently, we're slightly less than one mil below what the charter authorizes. Go ahead, please. So what is the vote all about? And I'm just going to read this quickly. "As the village council determines each year the need for new or improved services, the Headley restrictions limit their ability to serve the community thoughtfully and effectively. It also limits their ability to create reserves from which capital or other projects might be funded. To counteract this, voters will be asked in November to consider overriding the Headley provisions to adjust the current village rate of 2.5639 mils back to the charter-authorized rate of 3.5 mils. Other communities in the past have also done a Headley override. Those include Howell, Ann Arbor, Kalamazoo, Birmingham, and Harbor Springs, to name just a few." Another question that comes up is, how do our village rates compare with other, like, communities? So we looked at several villages in the metro area, and the general fund tax levy, for example, in the village of Holly is 11.9176. The village of Romeo is 12.7016, blah, blah, blah. And then ours is 2.5758. David?
Yeah, there's all -- are we measuring it against similar structured villages where they rely on [inaudible]? You pay part of the -- or an additional [inaudible].
They have -- part of what goes out to the township is not for services from the village, per se.
Right. I'm just saying, collectively, you're paying more than 3.5 for the village because we're also paying an additional [inaudible]. So we're seeing a comparison for the -- are we doing an apple? Where's the apple at?
That's why we labeled this, and what we were looking for was, what is our general fund tax levy in each of these communities? Because they're the only villages in the county besides us. They're much smaller than we. And it's a fair question. Sir?
I'm not really too interested in comparison of communities. In this case, what you're asking, to increase the current tax rate to 3.5, that's a 36.5% increase in addition to the increase that I will receive this year. Penal protection will crash after the rate of inflation, so my [inaudible] will go up by eight to 10%, plus the 36.5% increase in the [inaudible]. That's substantial. How could we just [inaudible]? Is there some desperate need for money suddenly, or am to that point, exactly what a lot of
We have some charts later on in the slideshow that talk -- that demonstrate what the actual increases would be for various values of properties.
That's not what they're asking about. They're asking about overall revenue changes year on year, based upon the [inaudible]. And that's what the president does every day already. So you can see, even though the president's going down, governor's going up, so the total revenue is [inaudible].
We have --
Especially if [inaudible]. Our sales in the village [inaudible]. Facing a 3% [inaudible]. 3% inflation there that you have [inaudible]. Every time [inaudible]. The new owners are faced with a new assessment [inaudible]. Which will be substantial, the [inaudible]. The new set that we've experienced [inaudible]. 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 That's a number to find out, but how many [inaudible]? Well, I don't because of the -- I'm just saying, if there's a sheer number of increase in sales [inaudible]. You see, [inaudible]. And the values of the sales are actually higher than the original orders would be paying as a [inaudible].
And what else can I add to that thing? Is we always [inaudible]. A lot of new people coming in, because we're always bringing out.
That's also not including your whole permit, or your [inaudible]. Also, [inaudible]. But I'm just saying, so. The question is, pretty much, it's very misleading. It doesn't show this rate constantly increasing, when in fact, you know your property tax has increased every year. It's a double ramp. We're going to get an increased tax rate here at this election, and we're going to get an increased assessment, and we're going to [inaudible]. So, you know, you want to be awash in revenue if you're spending as possible. [inaudible]. 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 Bear with me for a while. Let me -- I'll get you there. Go on, please.
So the question is, why are voters being asked to consider overriding Headley? Our expenditures have outpaced revenues, and that's the point that we've been talking about. They're projected to continue on the same trajectory to maintain current village service levels. If we just maintain the status quo with what we have today, we're still expecting that the rates of inflation for our services, most particularly the amount of money that we're paying for pensions and health insurance for our police, are causing us to have increased costs and the difficulty in managing that. As we mentioned earlier, for finalizing the budgets for 2122 and 2223, council appropriated funds from savings to balance revenues and expenditures. We don't want to do that again. So presuming there was no Headley override, and I'm assuming that you can read these numbers, but what we have here is the actual revenue and the actual expenditures from 2016 through 2022, 23. And each of those years, there's been slight increases in expenditures, and there have been slight increases in revenues, some years more than others. In 2015, there was a Headley override, which went into effect in the 2017, 2018 fiscal year, which may have been part of the reason why the council decided not to collect more than two mils when they had that increase in value, that they were -- an increase in the rate they could collect. But you can see that it has, in 2000 -- I'm talking only about revenue now. In 2019 and '20, it was 1,685,000. In 2021, the actual was 1,512. In 2122, it was 1,681, slightly less than a couple of years before. And it's budgeted in the coming year at 1,667, 1,667,000, a little less than in our current year. Expenditures are shown in the bottom line, and the -- I can read them if you like, but in 2016 and '17, we were at 1.26 million. In 2018 and '19, we were at 1.4 -- 1,147,500. And the actual in 2019 and '20 was 477, 1,477. In '20 and '21, it was 1,580. The actual for 2021, '22, was 2,40,000. And the budgeted portion for next year, this coming year, the one that we're in, is 1,957. So the -- in this last three years, we ended 2020, 21, having used $68,000 from savings. In 21, 22, we had used 360,000 from savings, and we're budgeted in 2022, 23, to use 290,000 from savings. Go on. And we had in '20, 2020, I understand that, but in 2020, there was a village question that was approved for police funding, and it was 0.38 mils, I think. And it wasn't collected until a year later. And that was the kick-up in the revenue at that point. Sir? I can't do that calculation in my head, but it's not that great. So it -- in revenue, the expenditures in 2016 and '17 were 1,260,000. And at -- in 2022, 23, almost a decade later, we were just under 2 million. So the increase over that period of time was about 240,000.
[inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
Other comment? There. All right. Would you ask me again because you tailed off at the end and I didn't hear it? I'd have to spend some time working with you on your question because I'm, I'm not understanding it very well at the moment. Somebody else back here had a hand up.
And the other thing, particularly for me, and I hope this, and I think this is probably the question to have, is for me, just in 2021 expenditures, 2021, 22, it's like a half a million dollars. It's like a, close to a 32% increase in expenditures. And that's, I know that's why you're coming after, or you want us to agree to the reset that end, right? I don't know why, where did the half a million dollar increase come from?
We'll get that information up. Want to go on? If, if Headley is approved, that is, if we go back to 3.5 mils, the revenue in 23, 24, which is the first year that it would be effective, would go up to 1 point, just under 2 million. And 24, 25, the presumption is that it would be also just under 1 million. But it would, by 25, 26, it would be slightly over at 2,400,000. The expenditures in each of those years would be increasing approximately 3%. And these are the numbers, this is, by the way, this slide presumes that there are, that we're comparing apples to apples. This is the same set of programs and everything for each of those years. And it doesn't presume that there's been any decisions made to reduce any of those programs to accommodate whatever other changes we needed to make to balance it out. And it's clear also that in this scenario, if there was an $80,000 correction as at the end of 23, 24, that you wouldn't have those overages in the following years. If that carried forward and there were no other changes. Go ahead. If the Headley override is approved and implemented in July of 2023, as I will explain in just a moment, this forecast that you just saw presumes a 3% revenue growth for each succeeding year and the maintenance of existing service delivery programs. And again, surely an $80,000 reduction in the 23, 24 fiscal year could have carryover benefit for each of the succeeding budget forecast, all other things being equal, and no appropriation from fund balance would be required in order to accomplish that. The current U.S. rate of inflation is the highest we've seen since the early 80s. Driving up costs across the economy, our increased costs impact police pension contributions and labor contract expectations as well as the expense of lawn cutting, landscaping, snow removal, and other village services. In the last eight years, the only service improvements other than in the police department have been the creation of an economic development program in 2020 and in the ongoing but limited engagement of professional accounting services beginning in 2021. You ask about revenues versus expenditures over that period of time. The top line is $2 million, right up there. And the red lines are revenues, I'm sorry, expenditures, and the green lines are revenues. And this is how it has trended since 2017. And this is what we see as our projections over this period of time. So where does Franklin's tax revenue come from? 71% of the revenue that we spend each year comes from property taxes. State shared revenues, which is basically the money that the state collects in sales taxes and our share of that is based on our population, represents about 18% of our income on an annual basis. And you notice down here in this other corner, it shows a list of where those other 11% comes from. We get cable revenues that are just under 8%. We have a risk management insurance group from which we receive dividends each year of approximately 1.2%. We have Act 51 administrative charges. The state runs a statewide road system for which they provide support. And it's administered under Act 51. And our portion of maintaining all of that record keeping is, earns us about a 1% admin charge. Then there's a collection of miscellaneous fees that represent about another 1%. Go ahead, please. This is a distribution of the spending in each year. You'll notice that approximately 60% of our spending goes to police. The cable commission gets approximately 2%. The label of personnel is really intended to be admin personnel. That's the people that work in the village hall other than the building department. But we have a collection of other services that are shown here on the left. I'm sorry, the right. I'll leave that. Can you read that? Okay, I'm just going to leave that up for a minute. Most of it is really bits and pieces in terms of our expenditures. The fire department is not a village operation. We provide revenues to them as based on our contract for services. And there is a mill levy that is dedicated to the fire service that's not listed in this because it's not part of our expenditures. That's correct. I couldn't hear that last part. Went to where? It's distributed to each of the activities to a certain degree, but since they are the major consumer of funds, it's also true that they are the major increase in our funds on an annual basis. Sure. A number of things. We had a labor contract that was approved in the last year that is going to cost us about 4% a year. We have a number of increases that are related to the Michigan employment, employees retirement system and the expenses related to the programs that have been provided for police and have to be paid for, both for people who have retired and people who are planning to retire. And that's a major portion of our expense, our increase. Not for pensions unless they're actually receiving a benefit, but if they're active employees, they don't. It, it varies a little bit based on the amount that they earned, how long they were in service. And the calculations, I think, are a constant percentage, but across the various levels that people earn based on their history and service with this village. I don't know the answer to, I, it's complicated in terms of, that's part of its earnings on the funds. Part of it's a decision that's made by the retirement board and how much they can afford to make in terms of changes because there's a couple of thousand people that are involved in that program. Ma'am? I couldn't tell you what it was five years ago, but it hasn't changed much. I think that the intent in putting this slide together was to demonstrate how the village uses its funds. And we weren't trying to demonstrate where there had been significant changes. When we're talking about just these very small cents per, or each dollar of, of taxes collected. It's a percent, the question at the top is where does your village tax dollar go? So what we did was take the various portions of the budget and basically treat it as a percent, but expressed in cents of a dollar. But it's, it's, that's approximately the percentage of the budget that goes to each of these activities. I'm not asking you to analyze it at all. I'm asking you to understand where it goes. But the fact is that each village, each organization handles it slightly differently. It's based on their priorities. Pardon me? We haven't done that research. We don't have the means to do that research. You compare, asking us to compare with other villages and how they spend their money? I hear your request. Go ahead, please. One of the things that we did in trying to demonstrate, sir? Could you speak up a little bit, please? Yes? Our portion. Same proportionates? Right. Now, let me make one, there, there is a special assessment district that is used for the area along Telegraph where we have in Bingham Farms, a number of commercial properties and office properties. Those are calculated as part of our overall cost for the police department. But for Bingham Farms, those costs may go up, but it's, it's assessed to the district in ways that are inconsistent with the way they'd be assessed to the village of Bingham Farms as a whole. Would you ask me that again? I'm having difficulty hearing you, so. Yeah. There's an exception in there in terms of increases in the pension. And I, the language was negotiated with Bingham Farms a number of years ago. I don't recall the specifics of that language. It predates me. But there are some portions of the pension costs that they are exempted from paying. It's not the whole thing. Yep, a big chunk of it. Depends on the benefit package that they have with their employees. I hear you. The kind of questions that you're asking are the very questions that the council goes and works through as we're working through the budget. We haven't, in the time that I've been here, spent an exhaustive effort comparing our expenditures with another village or another local city for that matter. There are some smaller ones around. We have not done that, not recently. Right. Understand. Sir? It was definitely part of the conversation. And where we settled was not where they wanted to be. I'll say that. Pardon me? The employees. Yes. Yes. David? There's not an end point per se, but there's nothing to preclude us to sit down with them or they with us on any given year based on changes in circumstance. Sir? Our police count has been fairly steady. The number of people we have working for the police department has not changed in the last several years. Could you save that question until we get through these slides, please? Because that's a more generic, general... I understand. Sir? This one here? That's the one that was approved by the voters in Franklin in 2020. Well, it goes into... The technical language of the proposal at the time was for police and general services. And the intent was, I believe, to have that added to what we now have as a general operating village, but dedicated to police. And it's been used for that purpose. Actually, it's not. It's a very... Well... I'm having to do the math in my head. It would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of $140,000. Again, I can't go back and recreate for you the rationale that was behind requesting that particular amount in 2020. I don't know the answer to that. I'm dealing with what I was dealt with as well. And when we... Earlier, there was a round pie chart that showed what our general fund village was. This number and this number were included in the amount of money that was shown on that chart. Those revenues were all in that chart. Moving on, please. Oh, wait a minute. Let me explain a couple of things. If you take a look at this chart, you ask, somebody asked about fire. There's 1.2 mills that are collected each year that go directly to fire. We have a half a mill approximately that goes to rubbish collections. The library gets 6/10ths of a mill. And in 2017, the voters approved a bond issue for road debt. And there's 2.85 mills that goes into paying that each year. The far right column is the amount on your tax bill that each one of these is collected, amounts to. So going back over on this side of the page, and this is really hard to see, but in this particular case, there's an equalized value of this property at $338,000. That's what the state equalized value of the property is. The taxable value is $211,000 and, I think, $220,000. And that's what the basis is. This is what the village is applied to in calculating what these numbers are going to be in your tax bill. And that's information that each of you should have in your tax bill to be able to identify what you have as a taxable value and a state equalized value on your particular property. That was the intent here, was to be able to show that that information is there. It's probably not something that you spend a whole lot of time studying. Go ahead, please. So how will the heavily override affect your taxes? This chart was put together, and clearly, these numbers on this side are based on rounded taxable values relative to a number of properties in the village. It goes from $100,000 of taxable value to $2 million of taxable value. And this shows what the increase, the actual increase per property would be based on these values for an annual increase if, beginning in 2023, '24, that was the impact that would... Each individual property of those values would have. It also shows what a monthly increase would be if you happened to budget that way. And... I don't have anything else to add to that. Go ahead. So Franklin tax dollars. A question comes up, how much of the Streetscape project was paid for out of the general fund? And the answer is none. The Streetscape project was basically... Go ahead, another slide, please. The funding for the Streetscape project came from Act 51 monies out of the state distribution. The initial decisions with respect to approval of the project, $1.1 million was committed from this Act 51 money that was available at the time. And the bond issue money that was left over after all the construction was done was used in the amount, or available in the amount of $1.6 million. The total there is $2.7 million as the initial allocation for this Streetscape project. In the intervening period, you'll notice that the final project was about $3.2 million. And there were a number of increased expenses that had to be accommodated as we finished up that project, all of which were deliberated and discussed with council and approved by council as we went through this two-year process of getting the Streetscape project completed. Would you go ahead, please? The initial project that was approved by council in the spring of 2020 was for less... It was about $2.4 million. There was $2.6, $2.7 million that was set aside for the project at that time. The initial projects did not... The initial approvals was for contract and contractor ASI and the engineering services. And there was anticipated that there would be a certain contingency that was a part of that that gets us up close to $2.7. The initial... There's been some discussion about a $1.1 million total estimate that was done in 2017 by the gentleman who had spent a whole lot of time and effort doing the initial design on the Streetscape project. The actual conclusion in 2020 involved a number of more items than what were in that original proposal. It was mostly the Act 51 monies that were available beyond the initial $1.1 million. That's a continuing revenue source. And there was money that was made available during that time that we were able to use. This project has taken the better part of three years. And so some of those funds, in terms of Act 51 monies, have increased over that period. What I wanted to do with this particular slide was to demonstrate what was the initial approval for expenditures in this project and to be able to compare that against the $3.2 million finish. Act 51 is... Thank you, Brad. The state of Michigan Department of Transportation presumes that the roads in Michigan are all part of a state system. It doesn't matter who does the local maintenance or the local design. It's all part of the state system. And to that end, Act 51 provides for allocation of funds to each one of the jurisdictions that maintains roads. They could be gravelled, they could be paved, they could be one of a number of things, but they provide funding through the local jurisdictions to help with that maintenance, both what they call local roads and major roads in each one of the communities. We have 33 miles, 23 miles, I'm sorry, of Act 51 roads in the village. No, that can be used for new construction. There's nothing about the act that says it can't be used for new construction. Go on, please. It's very much so what I'm saying. Absolutely true. Going on? This is the language that will be on the ballot. Some of you who have received your ballots already will see this. But what the language says specifically is, shall the authorized charter village of the village of Franklin, established at 3.5 mills, $3.50 per 1,000 of taxable value, and reduced to $2.5639 mills, $2.5639, $2.5639, I guess, of per 1,000 of taxable value by the heavily required village rollbacks be increased in an amount not to exceed .9361 mills, which is $0.93 per $1,000 of taxable value. To restore the original charter authorized village rate of 3.5 mills, 2023 to 2032 inclusive, and shall the city levy such new additional villages. The estimate of the increased revenue the village will collect in the 2023 calendar year is approximately $346,637 to be used for general operating purposes consisting of police, maintenance, repair of public grounds and facilities, daily operations, and maintaining services to the community. That's what's on the ballot. Go ahead. That's the conclusion of my presentation. Sure. 9.3. Yes. The heavily rollback is .93, 93 cents on $1,000 of taxable value. Yes. What happens with the heavily rollback is that the amount that we can authorize for villages is adjusted each year. And the only way it gets back to where it started from is with a rollback like this. And what this does is take us back up to 3.5 mills. Does that answer your question? Al? Okay. Well, there's nothing more to it than that. That's how much it's been reduced, and we're asking to have it put back. All right, let me give you a foreinstance. Presuming that this heavily override is approved in 2023, the actual mill levy that we are authorized to assess is 3.5 mills. Okay? The following year, the state will give us an adjustment factor. And that has to be subtracted from the 3.5 mills before we apply a mill levy in 2024. And each year thereafter, there will be an additional such adjustment so that the amount, the maximum amount we can levy is adjusted downward, just as it has been for the last decade. 2015. Sir? Kenz? That's the general understanding, yes. The village of Franklin pays an extraordinary expense or extraordinary portion of its budget for police services. And to the extent that those expenses increase, since it's such a large percentage of the budget, if it goes up 7%, and in a particular year, that's going to have a major impact on available revenues for other services. You're talking about legitimate policy questions, and I think that's something that you all need to spend some time thinking about. I've tried to give you the best answer I can to why the revenues, why the expenditures have gone up. That's the only place where I've seen significant increases. I got it. Here. The Broden House. But Lance, almost every bit of that money was state money. Let me, let me make a little comment here. Let me, let me explain a couple of things here first. This last year, when we went through the budgeting process, we demonstrated for the council budget numbers that went back all the way to 2013 and for each one of the activities in our budget. And we had that same number for each fiscal year that followed between 2013 and the present time. So they had the opportunity to watch and look at where those various expenses had changed over that period of time. Some have gone up, some have gone down, some have disappeared, but that was information that we haven't had available in prior years to speak of, but this year we were able to provide quite a bit of detail regarding that. The other thing that Bill was just showing me.
You gotta look at the police costs, and that's more than half of the, the increase. If you look at salaries from 2021, about 850,000, we're projecting about a $100,000 increase per year. We just signed a contract. It's a heck of a lot more competitive market than it's ever been, so that's an explanation for a big chunk of it. Second thing is, is pensions. 10 years ago, we had one police officer retired. Today, we have about 15, I think. Pension cost has gone from about 300,000 to almost 450,000. So there, there's 250,000 bucks. These are annual expense.
But it was several years difference.
Right. It's, yeah, it's comparing about three years ago versus now. So, so that's, and there, all the numbers are here. You can take a look at them. Absolutely, and I hear you, and I get you. That's why I walked up here to tell you, because, because it's, and then there's a few other little things, but they all add up. Now, 20,000 or 20,000 there, suddenly you're at 300,000, 400,000 bucks. That's where we are.
Hang on just a second, please. Angelina? I am, and, well, every, each, each of the last several years, we have rebid each of these contracts. We've not been fortunate to get much in the way of bidders, but we don't take the status quo as the answer. We made a concerted effort to redo and renew those contracts and solicited bids from a number of different sources. Question in the back. Yeah, come on. Sir? No, it's. That's correct. It, it keeps going back down, and each succeeding year is adjusted based on what it was the preceding year. Sir, question over here? Sir? Ma'am? Sorry about that. Would you ask that last part again? There's one reserve account, and it's down to about 300,000. No, there's only one. I said there was one. Now, she asked about reserve account, savings account. The general fund savings is the only part that we've had access to for this purpose. Less than 200, less than 300,000. Sir? I'm sorry? Yes, sir. That's also part of the reason that we've been engaging an independent accountant to help us with these numbers and to reconstruct them, because we weren't satisfied with the work that we had before. Okay, David? That would, yeah, that would, that would require a bit more of a case study in terms of what has happened with our property values within the village. And remember that it starts with the state equalized value, and the state equalized value is something that's determined at the county level, and it's adjusted for every property in the village based on that process. And I don't know for sure how much that's resulted in changes in the value of properties. I think it varies based on a whole bunch of stuff, but that would require some analysis. As Bill just pointed out, based on the numbers that were demonstrated on our budget, the amount of property tax have increased.
...
Ten years. Our viewpoint. All this says is confirmed that we're not. Names. I just know. We made all the happens is your one, your two, boost by the heavily amount. Heavily amount. Just in the next. And look at the separate. Got a question? We're posted, we're posted on the web. Is there, for any of the budget? There, the new come up, just being put forth. We paid for retired. I'll explain that. Officer here's paying for the pension product on that officer behalf for you. And that's what the officer gets to draw on. This will cost for us in clear, that maybe you do or cumulative vacation time or something like that. That you can cut through, you can cut through person of leading our department. And that's the only expenses that are pensioned in the way that are related to particular persons. We've increased the amount of money and the ability on for our officers where we are at 60%. Based what our position in the system, we're currently at 50%. That is because that down on the rest of the ways to for the next seven years and then also. Oh, yes, there is a market budget to include. She's got interesting hand signals. All right. Ask me that again, please. The Act 51 money? You said 1.1 million, Act 51, 1.6. Million was from the road funds. Over the course of the two and a half years, two years of the project, there was additional monies available in the Act 51 account that we were able to use to help make up those differences.
I think there was a question because, again, I understand why you, you presented it. It was based on the initial projection, right? So they thought that the projection was back where the additional bond came. My understanding is that they came from Act 51 after that.
That's right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate your time.